Javier, he was here. He went home to get something and was on his way back. I'll go to the teacher's first of this, okay? And then we'll do the pledge.
Sure.
He's here. Never mind, he's here, everybody. Javier, my friend, come on up. All right, Javier, you're ready to lead everybody in the pledge of allegiance? Okay, record please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Javier, I'm going to have you stand over here so that I can see you. All right. So everyone, this is Javier Rivera Sanchez. He is a second grade student in Mrs. Jancy's class. And Javier, there's a lot of nice things that a lot of people said about you, okay? You ready? This one's for Mrs. Bruce. He was first grade.
Hey, ma'am.
In first grade, Javier made tremendous progress from September to June. I was so impressed with how he learned so quickly to read and write words and soon after write complete sentences. Javier was always eager to learn new concepts and apply what he learned in the classroom. He is also an amazing artist. He takes his pride in all his hard work. Keep up the hard work, Javier. This next one is from Mrs. Roll, your art teacher. She says, Javier has been a wonderful help with communicating with our Spanish-speaking students. He truly does a great job making our new friends feel welcome. Thank you, Javier. We've got Ms. Falter. She's right over there. She's getting more.
Hi, Sarah.
You love her? Yes. And this Falter said, working with Javier as an English language learner has been so rewarding. Javier has shown tremendous growth in his character and his academic skills. He now uses his superpower of being bilingual to be a classroom leader to our newcomers and a great friend. I am so proud of you, Javier. And then this last one is from Mrs. Jancy, your teacher now. Javier has truly been an amazing helper for me and my classroom. Javier is bilingual and translates everything from lunch menus to assignments to my new Spanish friends. His ability to speak two different languages amazes me each and every day. I really do not know what we would do without him in room 31. This is Jancy. So Javier, I wanted to say thank you so much for being such an awesome flyer and welcoming our new little flyers to our school and our community. Congratulations.
Good job. Thanks for helping out with all our new friends.
All right. Now we're going to recognize Ms. Kayla Falter and Ms. Cindy Pino. Okay. They're standing right over here. Come on up, ladies. Kayla, who's in the white and blue dress, started as a long-term sub last year and then was hired in her current preparatory role as a ENL teacher. Cindy is a brand-new hire here and is just beginning her teaching journey here at the primary school this year. This dynamic duo is being honored tonight for the hard work and dedication to our out-of-students and families. They've had quite a challenge this year with the anticipated arrival of our newcomers to our school and district. Both teachers have taken the time to get to know all their students, reach out to their families, and bridge the gap between home and school. They have shown that they are flexible and amenable in undertaking and navigating the bends in the road this year. I'm very proud of their efforts and so very happy that they are part of our school and community. They've been essential lifeline for our CDA teachers as well. Both teachers have taken the time to work with teachers and provide the necessary support to ensure a successful start for our students. I personally want to thank both of them for everything they've done this year and I'm very excited to see without state bringing to our district and the ENL program. So thank you and congratulations.
Before we get to our reports, I just wanted to provide a little update about the asylum seekers and something else that's been in the news lately. Well, I'll start with the asylum seekers. I wanted to just share with you like our enrollment and where our asylum seekers are in relation to the classrooms. And I'm sorry, this might not be perfect, but... So this is our pre-K. Our pre-K, we see we have 85 students, five asylum seekers, and there are the classrooms that they're in. We were expecting about 100 pre-K. We said we had 85, so we do have that full-day class, which is good for kids and good for us, but enrollment is a little lower at this point than we would have expected. Here's kindergarten. Kindergarten, we have about 150 students and eight asylum seekers, and you see where they are. Three in Mrs. Kamrowski, three Mr. Koldar, three Mrs. Pieri. And what the elementary principals do for ease of service, ENL services, is they create ENL classrooms in each grade level. In primaries' case, there are three ENL classrooms in each grade level. And, you know, out of the 22 students, for example, 10 or 11 might be ENL. So there are a large number of ENL students in each of these classrooms in addition to the three asylum seekers. But again, it just helps with delivery of service. Second grade, here are our class numbers. 162 kids overall in the grade level, eight asylum seekers, and again, three classrooms are spread out in. See, the classrooms are, the class numbers are generally, you know, good. You know, low 20s are, you know, I think are numbers that I like to see. In the second grade, it holds true. We do have a classroom of 25, one of 24, but overall, our class numbers are, are as you see here, 159 total, 10 asylum seekers, and they're, they're spread out among those, those three classrooms. At the intermediate school, scroll to third grade. These are our class sizes right here. These are, we have four asylum seekers in two classrooms, two and two. Fourth grade, now, fourth grade is where we have an anomaly, where we had, we had an issue over the summer. We, here are the class sizes currently in fourth grade. 27, 26, 26, 26, 26, 26. Those are not acceptable. And what we were doing, we had 21 students move into the district between the end of school and today that are in fourth grade. That's a whole classroom of fourth-grade students that just moved into the district over the summer. Now, before the, the numbers got, got this high, we were thinking of, and I, you know, discussing with, with Mrs. Crum and discussing with some of the teachers at the intermediate school, we were thinking of providing teacher aides for the classrooms that were getting higher numbers. And that was what we were, you know, that was the plan. But after the plan was enacted, more fourth-grade students started to come in, and the numbers got to be what you see here. And at that point, we decided, you know, that, that those numbers are too high even with teacher aides. And, you know, we didn't want to split up the kids. But I feel like lower class sizes would be more beneficial in the long run. So we are posting for a fourth-grade teacher now, and with the, the new fourth-grade teacher, these will be our class sizes, which you see are vastly better than these ones. But again, it was not our first option to, to split up the, the kids. You know, they're placed in classrooms right now, but we just, we had no control over the, the number of fourth graders that entered into the district over the summer. Just, I've never seen something like that happen, you know, all on one grade level. We had a high number of first-grade students move in too, but not enough to, as you can see with the, the class sizes here, not enough to, you know, make, make a change like we are in fourth grade. But, you know, we want families to know that wasn't our, you know, our, we had no way of knowing, first of all, that, that many students would move into the district over the summer. And, you know, it wasn't our first choice to split up the classes either. Yeah, we, we were going to assign teacher aides, but these are not classroom numbers that I'm comfortable with. So that's the reason why we're adding a fourth-grade classroom in this time. And you see, fourth grade only has two asylum seekers as well. So it's not, these aren't, it's not an issue because of asylum seekers. This is an issue of families moving into the district over the summer. Fifth grade, they have nine asylum seekers, 180. It's a pretty healthy number in fifth grade. And you see the class sizes. They're, they're, you know, a couple of them are getting to levels like, that I'm not comfortable with. But, you know, we're going to continue listening to the teachers and see if there's anything that they tell us that they need. We're going to attempt to fill those needs. But at this point, this is where we stand at fifth grade. In middle and high school, we, we have a, a large number of, you look at our, our sixth-grade class, which includes 12 asylum seekers. We weren't, we were not expecting 180 students in sixth grade. So we did get a lot of, in addition to the asylum seekers, we did get students moving into the district that were sixth graders. Middle school is about 500 students right now overall between the, the three grade levels. Now, we did provide the middle school with a dean of students and a hall monitor to help, you know, with the environment in the school. We didn't know at the time that, you know, we had asylum seekers and such, but we, we did it because we wanted to be proactive, teachers helping the environment. But those numbers are big. A number that sticks out of high school is the freshman class of 183. Again, you know, we have five asylum seekers there, but we had a lot of students moving in that were freshmen. And that number is, is, is very high. And so high school overall is 641 students and 18 asylum seekers. At this point, where we are with the asylum seekers, the ENL, the state of New York gave the ENL department extra time to conduct the initial screenings to determine the, the levels that the students are, which determines their level of service. If they're beginning, they get more ENL service than, than if they're more advanced. So we're in the process of, you know, making the, those determinations through the testing. We have reached out to OSIS to see if we can get assistance in helping our teachers conduct this testing so that we can start to deliver service. Because once we start to deliver the service, then we can figure out where, really, where are the needs? Do we need more aides? Do we need, you know, lower class sizes somewhere? We, we just don't have that information. This is, I started the second full week of school, I believe, right? So we're actively working on getting that information. But right now, it's, it's hectic time for teachers trying to test these kids, all the ENL kids, to, to get them, you know, appropriate levels for, for service delivery. We're continuing, I have weekly conversations with a working group, a migrant working group that includes the OSIS superintendent, superintendent Sweet Home, representatives of Jericho Road, who, organization helping the asylum seekers, and, and county. And we talk, we talk about issues related to the region. And that's been very helpful. There's been very good collaboration between Area 1 of OSIS and, and us. I met with some OSIS staff today about the possibility of bringing in itinerant teachers if we need that service rather than teacher aides. And we're continuing to listen to our teachers. I have a meeting with some building representatives tomorrow and going to hear what they have to say about what they're thinking they need. So it's been a very fluid situation. You know, it's been a very hectic month. Asylum seekers started to register, I think, the 20th, the 25th of August. So since then, it's been very, you know, fluid, very changing, a lot of information changing. You don't know a lot of information either. But we try to give as much as we can in time for the kids. I think the kids are adjusting well. I think, you know, their principals report they're very, very vivacious. Very happy to be here. We're happy to have them too. Again, I've always said this is not an issue that they've caused. And I view our role as an educational institution as to make this the best possible place we can for those kids. And that's what our teachers and staff are doing. So it's been a, a good start. I think that we'll have more of an idea of the resources that we need, if any, as the situation develops. But right now, hiring the extra .5 teacher, hiring potentially four to six teacher aides, and the transportation costs associated with asylum seekers were over $400,000. So this is, again, $400,000 that we were not intending to spend when we passed the district budget in May. So, I mean, I'm doing a lot of questioning about how is the district going to get reimbursed for this? Who is going to reimburse us? I'd be happy to hand someone a bill, whoever that may be. But again, you know, the district, the taxpayers of the district, current students, we're not, we didn't ask for this political situation either. And again, there's, to me, for me, it's, it's a, it's a multifaceted issue, right? It's, we take care of the kids because that's what we do. We take care of kids. No question about it. On the other hand, we have, we're responsible for the taxpayers. So we need to make sure that we protect both of those groups. And that's what we're attempting to do. We're actively lobbying the state, New York City, as much as they'll listen to us, about reimbursing us for our costs. So it's been a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of, you know, things that we haven't done before. Hopefully, we'll be getting, just like with the COVID years. I remember the COVID years, the same thing, you know, same thing. We did, we did the work. We did have a lot of information. Information that we had changed all the time. And when it ended, we never want to see COVID again. So this kind of reminded me of that. But there is a sweet thing about it, and it's the kids. The kids that we welcomed into our district are, I think, any, any, any diversity enriches us. And we're glad to have them. So anybody have any questions about the asylum seekers? I'll continue to keep the board and the community updated on, on things as I know of. Let us know that we're, we're working very hard behind the scenes to try to recoup some of this money and do whatever we can for the, the district. The second issue I, I wanted to kind of talk about before the reports was the issue of the CDA, the Child Victims Act. And there was an article that came out in Buffalo News a few weeks ago, and there's actually a story on Channel 7 today about it. The CDA, the Child Victims Act was, in case you don't know, was passed by New York State. It allowed victims of child abuse to, a greater window to go back and sue an organization, an individual for child abuse that occurred. Well, Maryville was named in five cases from the 1970s, early 1970s. So more than 50 years ago. And we, as a result of those cases, we owe millions of dollars that, that we need to pay. So the Child Victims Act, although you could argue it was well-intended, there are real consequences for us as a district, as taxpayers. Most of us weren't even born, you know, when, when these, things happened. And the individual that perpetrated these things is deceased. So now, the law says that the current taxpayers are on the hook to pay for these judgments. They could have been in the tens of billions of dollars each, but they're still, it's still substantial. It's still something that we're going to be talking about as well. And we're going to need to talk to the community about how do we, how do we get through this? Because we have to pay roughly $1.2 million a year for the next five years as a result of the CDA. And that's a significant hit on our budget. So it, it is something that we're also lobbying the state for because the state created this issue. They created this law, and then they, I don't think, thought through the consequences enough on what could happen to kids, what could happen to programs. Assemblyman Conrad, Assemblymember Wallace are two co-sponsors of the bill. And Mr. Conrad spoke today about the options on the table are, you know, could be cuts to programs. And if you've been to our budget presentations, you know that the majority of our budget is spent on programs, and that's the way it should be. So when you're looking at budget reductions, that's where unfortunately the budget reductions hit. The non-mandated things, the things that we built back up after the recession. Recession era, we had nothing in this district. And we built that up. There's still a long way to go. But we don't want to lose what we've had, what we brought back. So the board and I, we're, we're fighting for this funding. We're fighting to be made whole, or at least some of it. Because I don't think that the taxpayers and the kids of today should be on hook for what happened over 50 years ago. It's not fair. So we're fighting for it. It's something that we're going to be talking about, especially as we close the budget season. Talking about it in public and presenting what we think are the options to the community. And ultimately, it's the board and the community that decides the direction that we go. Our job is just to present it, and we're going to be doing that over the next several months. Anything else I should add? Questions about the CDA? All right. Rambled on, I don't know if that made right. Thank you.
Thank you. So now onto our fun stuff. Our first presentation is the audit report.
He's going to say it wants to get audited. Good evening. I'm Sarah D. from North Stand and Torvik, and I am here to present the results of your audit for the year ended June 30th, 2023. All board members should have a packet of them with a summary as well as draft copies of all of our reports. I did go through with the board president and management earlier this evening in more detail the results of the audits. I'm going to keep it high-level, and please just interrupt if you have any detailed questions. So you hire us to render an opinion on your financial statements. Your financial statements include an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, meaning your financial statements are fairly prescient in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. There's also two other reports that you're audited under. One is government auditing standards, there are no matters there. And the other is the uniform guidance, which is required for your federal funding. You had just under $5 million in federal expenditures in 2023. You're deemed low risk, so we're required to test only 20% of those funds. Based on what we did end up testing, which was the education stabilization fund, we actually tested about 47% of your federal expenditures and had no findings and no question costs relative to those expenses. Included in the packet is an extra classroom activity of the schedule of the additions and deductions to the student clubs, as well as communication with those charge of governance and a management letter, which I'll review very briefly, starting on the next page. So there's certain things that were required to communicate to you as part of our audits, that we are independent as we are required to be as your external auditors, that we are hired to render that opinion on your financial statements, but we do not test 100% of your transactions. It is based on materiality and risk analysis. There are significant estimates within your financial statements, so not every number is an exact number. Those significant estimates relate to your capital assets, so your buildings and your equipment, and how long those are useful and therefore, how many years those are depreciated over. Compensated absences, which is the estimate of your cumulative significant vacation time. Pension and other post-employment benefits, which are actuarial calculations. The pensions are the state pension systems, TRS and ERS. The state hires those actuaries and then calculates the district's percentage of that entire balance for the state as a whole. OPAP, other post-employment benefits, you hire your own actuary and then calculate those balances for what benefits you've promised to employees at retirement for health insurance. And then the last major estimate is your reserves and what amounts you believe are needed within those reserve funds. If you were to just read a few note disclosures within those 50-page financial statements, we would tell you to look at note two, which discusses your fund balance. Unassigned fund balance, by law, the unassigned portion should not exceed 4% of next year's expenditures. Yours was over the 4%. And the intention and plan, I believe, is for the board to review that and to use that as necessary during the 24th of school year and/or determine what reserves it should be added to. Note six, short-term debt. So short-term debt is typically bond anticipation notes. As of year-end, you did not have any bond anticipation notes, but subsequent to year-end and therefore disclosed in your statements was issuance of a $24.8 million bond anticipation note, 19.7 of that being used for your ongoing capital projects, and then the $5.1 million towards the legal settlements that the superintendent discussed. And that is that $1.2 million repayment over five years. Note seven is your long-term liabilities, your leases, your bonds, your energy performance contract. Note eight, excuse me, is pensions. And note nine is other post-employment benefits. All adjustments that we recommended were made as part of the audit. We had no disagreements with management. The one remaining open item is just getting the legal letter back from your attorney, which is typically the last thing that we ask for as we present. And there were no other significant matters or findings. The management letter is where we would convey to you any material weaknesses that we found in your internal controls. There were no material weaknesses in your internal controls, so our comments within the management letter are basically just observations and comments and recommendations. The first one, again, relates to the 4%, the amount of unsigned fund balance in excess of the 4%. The second point is relative to your extra classroom activity clubs. The student treasurers keep a set of records in addition to the central treasurer's records. Those should match. There is one club that we tested that didn't match, and then there were a few clubs that just had missing receipts and disbursements details. So we just recommend that those treasurers that you review with them and the faculty advisors review with them to ensure that those records are complete. And then fund balance in the food service fund shouldn't exceed the average of three months of expenditures within your school lunch fund. Because of COVID funding, almost every district has fund balance in excess of that number. And this is really just a reminder and a recommendation to continue reviewing your school food service fund to determine what that excess fund balance can be used for. There are only specific things that you can use that money for, and you have to submit a plan, as you have done and will have to do again, to the state education department. Then there's two new accounting pronouncements coming out in 2024 and 2025. We do not expect either of them to have a significant impact on the district, but we have summarized them within that letter for your review. Moving on to the next page, it's just a summary of fund balance. The general fund is broken out between your reserves, your amounts designated for the subsequent year, encumbrances, and unassigned fund balance. There's been an increase of about $2.8 million in fund balance in the general fund due to increases in state aid, which I'll review momentarily. In the capital projects fund was a significant change from a deficit of $11.2 million to positive fund balance of $2.3 million. That is just an accounting function. You had bond anticipation notes in 2022 that you then issued bonds to repay during 2023. Those bonds are recognized as revenue and they offset that deficit. At the end of the day, total fund balance then for the district increased from $6.5 million to $22.9 million. Again, as a function of those bonds, that fund balance will go back down as you spend on your projects. The next two pages just show detail of your general fund revenue and general fund expenditures. You can see from the charts that, for the most part, your, those remain relatively consistent year to year, extremely consistent for the most part. The, the only one you can see increasing of any significance is state aid. Your increases for 2023 were due to increases in general aid and then about $1.3 million in the increase in transportation aid. That is, that's based on the prior year expenditures. As you'll recall, transportation costs were close to zero during COVID and then going up slightly. So each year, as you get a year further and you're having more transportation costs a year in order to be reimbursed for subsequent. So it's because of 2022 expenditures, we've received additional transportation aid in 2023. General fund expenditures were up about $3.8 million, or 8.1%. Really, the big change here is in that transportation and other expenses. On a fund basis, you did pay about $2 million in settlements on those CDA claims. On a fund basis, you did pay about $2 million in settlements on those CBA claims during the 2023 school year, and then the balance of that was financed with the bond anticipation note in July. So you do see an increase in expense of $2 million because of that in 2023. Without that legal settlement, your increase was only about 3.9% in expenses year to year. With that $2 million, your increase was 8.1%. The final page is the government-wide summary. So as a government, you are required to show your activity both on a fund or modified accrual basis and on a government-wide or full accrual basis of accounting. So this government-wide method includes all of the activity of the district, including all of your buildings and equipment, net of depreciation, and then all of your long-term liabilities as debt. This schedule just summarizes all of those. Really, the only big fluctuations year to year is the flip-flopping of the increase in your long-term liabilities and the decrease in your other liabilities, and that is due to the issuance of that bond that repaid a ban. A ban is short-term included in other. A bond is long-term included in long-term liabilities. Also included on this basis in other liabilities is the additional $4.4 million for the legal settlement as well, which again will be recognized on a fund basis starting in '24. That is as brief a summary as I can do, because I don't have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our New York State report card data overview.
I'm trying to look it there. All right. I am here today to present the 2020, 2021, 2022 report card data.
Looks like it's minimized on the bottom.
Okay, it's not minimized here. Let's see.
Two screens you might have to drag over. Drag that over to that screen. It's not, it's not mirroring the screen.
Oh, here we go. Perfect. All right. Thank you so much. So report card data usually, they usually report card data in spring of every year. So the past several years, as you know, testing has been an issue with COVID. We haven't had really great accountability data with that, but since 2017, '18, when we were designated as a district in need of improvement for our intermediate building, our targeted school, we can share that five-year growth of data. One thing that's changed with report card data is the state no longer considers proficiency rates as the accountability data, but rather they consider growth data. So it's a good thing. That has changed probably in the last six years. So now they really look at subgroup growth to really determine percentage rankings for school districts. And when you see the rankings, it's from one to four. Rankings one to four for the school districts are the rankings for all the New York State schools, all the schools in the New York State. So if you see twos and threes and fours are the things we want to see, ones we want to try to stay away from, and that's how we got identified earlier '17, '18 with our Hispanic subgroup at the intermediate building. So you can see our demographics here are not exact current as of today. Today is very different with our growth that we've had in 2021, 2022. We went over 2,000 students. You can see the changes in red. We dropped from '17, '18, that was a five-year span that we're looking at this historical data, and this again from '21, '22, we dropped about 102 students, which was about 5%. The green is showing the growth in our subgroup populations, where we show that we increased our growth of our students coming into Maryvale. And you will see that I highlight on the next slide, our current ENL, our English Language Learner Student data. I think that's important to show. This is not part of, they should say that this is not part of the state report card for '21, '22. But I wanted to put this fresh new slide up here so you can see our growth in our English Language Learner population, as that's one of the indicators that has shifted in the New York State report card. You'll see on the next several slides, it'll look at ELP and ELP where we fall within the growth model for that. So you can see in '13, '14, we had 52 Ls and currently we have 216 with that number for this year. '23, '24 is about, I believe, we're almost at 280-ish. So that's definitely a 315% increase last year. It was up until last year. Now we're having even more growth there. So we're almost at 10% with our Ls, which is great for diversity. We started at, you know, a little under two or a little over 2% in '13, '14, and we've really grown in this subgroup of students. So the great news to celebrate is that our intermediate school was, showed enough growth in their subgroup, so I'll show you that slide a little bit, that they're no longer identified, and so neither is our school district. And that's not just easy to say that they're no longer identified. I have to give kudos to the instructional leader at the building, I mean, and the teaching staff, the wonderful work that they did to get where they needed to go to show that growth. And we're so excited to see that continued growth. Can't talk about the data that's been released, but I can tell you I took the key at it and I'm really excited because I can see that we have even more growth to celebrate. So that's really exciting because then you can see the results trickling into the middle school, which is awesome as well because of overtime for five years they've been working on. And we're always working on school improvement cycle, but they really dove deep into their data, they embraced it, they targeted what they needed to target, and they continue to do that to sustain that growth. So again, you can't give enough props to that because that's a big achievement, probably deserves more than just this one slide. Probably deserves a priority. So when we look at indicator accountability levels, I want you to keep focused on this one, two, three, four. One is 0% to 10% of the schools in New York State. That's where we fall in that indicator. Two is 10% to 50% of the schools in New York State. Three is 51% to 75%, and then 75% or higher is four, so it's exceeding. In that huge range of two, you look at 10% to 50% of the schools fall within there, they do not give us a percentage ranking. So we don't have the percentages, we just have the overall ranking of where we fall. So we never receive a target or exact percentage within that 10 to 50 where we fall. So here are the different indicators and subgroups here that we're looking at for the elementary middle. Elementary middle is first grade through eighth grade. So this slide is a picture of first through eighth grade. And what, again, what we want to see is we really, we love to see fours. This four is always exceeding, but we want to really look for those threes and then those twos. Twos are really showing that developing and kind of growing into the next category and the next ranking. We always want to be ranked pretty high up, right? So we want to try to stride through that four, but three also is good to be at as well. You can see that they took, now the state weighs attendance ranking in here. So chronic absenteeism is that last column there. It is very interesting to look at our chronic absenteeism ranking and where we fall, because again, we want to fall within that. That three is 51% to 75% of the schools in New York State compared to our student performance. The first column is course subject performance, and that is all the students that took the tests, the New York State assessments. The second column speaks to that 95%. So our goal, New York State, as I said, has expectation that maybe 95% of our students being tested. That's something I can say that both schools have been focused on for the last several, several, many years. And making sure our students get tested, 95% of our students get tested. That's been always around for the last 20-plus years that I've known New York State and their testing is always to try to target at 95%. The second column includes that 95%. So you can see a three, it's a little bit higher because once we get into individual schools, you will see that the middle school not at 95% at a higher rate than the intermediate school did. So you'll see that those numbers change a little bit. All right, I'm gonna move to the next here. The secondary indicator levels, this is our high school, nine through 12, also includes of our middle school students that take algebra and living environments. This data looks a little different, will look a little different than it will this year because this data considers all of our waivers, right? So the waivers that were replaced for our region's exams. And so it will take that column one and two, might look a little bit different this year than it has in the past. The graduation rate stands out, I would think at that two. So again, we're at that two, which is 10, where we fall in a ranking with the New York State, all the New York State schools, 10 to 50%. We don't know that percentage that we're in that number two, but it can tell you that they consider the cohort. So the four-year cohort, the five-year cohort, and the six-year cohort graduation rate. So our six-year cohort for, I think it was 2015, 2016, we were at about a 90% on graduation rate. The five-year cohort was at about a 90% as well, and then the four-year was at a 92%. Within those individual cohorts, though, they consider and weight the dropout, non-graduates. Okay, so in the 15, 16 cohort, there were 17 non-graduates in the 16, five-year cohort, it was 18, and then 12 in the four-year cohort. So that also weights into it. And then if it puts it in perspective that if it's a 90, it's about a 90% graduation rate that this indicator number two, it's giving us a number two, that means in New York State and so are other 10 to 50% of the schools also fall into that. So it's not like, I don't want that two to like freak us out a little bit because 10 to 50% of the schools in New York State also are in that category as well. And a lot of it had to do with the waivers for the COVID for the school year. So students didn't have to take the exam. That impacts it as well. And then this is the primary school accountability data. And when we're looking at this data, columns one and two are specific to grade three students and how they do on the state tests. So again, you'll look at the left-hand, the first column here explains all the students that took the assessment. The second is a denominator of 95%. Then we look at our ELP, and so this is our English language proficiency. And the state sets for each building, based on where students are on their levels and how long they've been identified as an English Language Learner, the state sets an expected growth target. So I just pulled the growth targets for this to explain that column a little bit better. So for the primary school, the state growth target was a .34, and we mounted it at a .19. So that would put us into that progress. That's our growth progress made and gives us a level two. A level four again is exceeding that target. In order to get a level three, you have to meet the target that the state sets 100%. So that's why you will not see probably a three, you have to meet it at 100%, which, I mean, it's high expectations, but we've also had COVID in with us too. And then the chronic absenteeism, that is, that only is considered our first and second graders because kindergarten, prepaying kindergarten data is not taken into account for your state accountability data. When we look at the intermediate building, when we look at, when the intermediate building was identified or any building were to get identified, how the accountability data is looked at, the state looks at column one and column two. And if there's a level one in either of those columns, then we move on to the third column. If there's a level one in the third column, that's how we become identified as a targeted school within a school district. So these numbers are pretty important as a calculator weighing the performance for each building and for the students. Again, we look at our ELP efficiency here, and there's again, a target that set by the state was .35, and then the amount of growth our students shown was .31. So we're just a few, just a few points shy from meeting that 100%, which would put us in that three category. So that's why you see level two there. And then you can see the break broken down by subgroups. It is interesting to see when you look at, if you look at threes and fours and chronic absenteeism, those are students that are coming to school all the time. And then you look at their performance and their weighted average performance or their course subject performance. That's the data to look at to determine like, hmm, I wonder what's, there's a little discrepancy here, what's going on with this data. The students are showing up to school, but they're showing up all the time and they have grade attendance, their performance might be lacking in another area. Get a look at that. That helps us dig a little bit deeper. Okay, and that middle school accountability data, and as I said earlier, you'll see like in that weighted average participation or performance is really attributed to the participation rate at the middle school. They exceeded that 95%, and so you can see that reflected there in that level three for most of their students. And they're, again, they're level two in their English language proficiency. Their target was set at a .29, and the success, the growth progress made was .26. So you see, they're just shy, .29 to .26. So that's a level, that would put them at a level two, but very close to a level three. And then we have the, oops, the high school data here. And here you will see that graduation rate again, that was in the slide before. And for their English proficiency level, they had a target set for .27, and their growth made was a .03. So that put them in that level one. And again, these calculations are figured on how long the students have been identified as English Language Learner, what their current levels are, and how much growth they show. So if a student is at expanding, like the growth is going to be minimal compared to a student that's maybe at a beginning level of the primary building, just coming to us, they're going to show that growth faster. So keep that in consideration too. But these are just, these are just indicators that help us work on the work, right? Work on the instruction, work on what we need to do to target all students, to make sure we're meeting the needs of all students. And that is really what New York State is about with this new accountability data. That's not, it's about six years new, but they really want to make sure that school districts are transparent with their data and they're targeting the subgroups that they need to target to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all learners. And it's a good thing because before it was just based on, if you remember, how many kids got three or four on the ELA in math? And then that was your proficiency rate, and that's how you were really kind of labeled as a school district, right? So they take into that growth, that growth piece, even the little bit of growth that's shown counts towards that progress. Okay, what questions do you have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person.
You might need to again.
Ms. Adams Phillips, here are the summer school program highlights.
Oh, wow, it came up. Uh, Joe. Don't lose the mouse. Well, this is what they want.
Hi, Kristin Hada and I are going to review the summer school that we ran this summer. The summer school program was a five-week program, and it ran from August 6th until, no, from July 6th until August 11th. And then we did two days of region's exams in August. It is a five-day week program. It ran for three hours a day, and our numbers this year increased drastically. Last year, we had, the year before last, we had 37 students in middle school, and this year we had 46 students. So our numbers went up. And the high school.
The high school, we had 46 students this year as opposed to, I'm sorry, we had 51 students this past summer, the summer before, we had 40. So our total pulled together, we went up 20 students.
And the way, this year, we were fortunate enough to have a lot of live classes, so we were able to get teachers. Unfortunately, for math in grade six and seven, I was unable to secure a teacher, so we used Apex. And the high school.
Yeah, we used Apex. We went from Gradpoint to our new program, Apex, and for that, we support geometry, English 12, and for art history.
We had, in the middle school, all the students passed. We had no failures, so that was good this year. We had, in the middle school, all the students passed, we had no failures, so that was good this year.
And for the high school, we just had, we had very few, very few failures, mostly all of our students passed the classes. So this year, with the special appeal, they, here are the numbers presented for the students who passed Regents exams. We also had five August graduates this year. And that is all.
Do you have any questions?
Is Apex just an highlight?
Yeah, it's kind of like Gradpoint, what we used to use. We used Gradpoint, but it is an online program.
Yeah, thank you for your work. We should note that for the summer program, this is the last year for the summer program in its current form. We paid for the summer program, summer school via stimulus funds. And we're probably going to go back to how it was run in the past versus this model, but we'll discuss that as we get closer to summer, but that's a possibility. Great job.
Thank you.
I don't need any technology. You should have this in your packet, we had some junes, nice students who didn't get through. Five, and then as Mrs. Haddis said, we graduate in August. Two of them, two of them are coming back for, no, this year. Yeah, two of them are coming back for a fifth year. One student is currently just needs to pass English Regents to get their diploma. So that student's back getting academic intervention, and perhaps will hopefully pass his exam in January. And then one student has opted out for like to go into the test, which is the, they do, which is the. Any questions? Pretty straightforward. Principals, do you have a report? Vader?
All right, so just in case you wanted more numbers, you got them. You're not sick of them yet. So every year, we do have to do the Vader report, it's based on school safety. And there are certain incidents that need to be reported, as we'll kind of get into here. The second part of this is also the Being the For All Students Act in reporting, reporting incidents of harassment and bullying. So again, a lot of this is governed by federal and state laws. We do this annually, and fortunately, you know, we've never really had too much of an issue with our numbers in their reporting, so that's good. These are the ten categories that we have to report on. Hopefully, we never get into some of these categories. You know, it goes all the way from homicide, sexual, various sexual offenses. You'll see that there's kind of two levels of those sexual offenses. Same thing with assaults and weapons possession. Then we get into the harassment and the bullying, the discrimination, bomb threats, false alarms, so on and so forth. And each category is weighted with a different weight, and we'll kind of go into where those weightings come in. The weightings come in when we talk about the School Violent Index or this indicator. And basically what we're doing is we're adding up all the points based on those incidents and dividing by our student population. And that kind of gives us this indicate, this index. And as long as we stay below one point five, we're good. Primary school, you want a story?
Sure, during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we did have one incident that did occur on school grounds. And so we had to do a Vader report. And I had asked for help and I came back because we had that since then, so. We're continuing to support our student programs and our students through the use of our school counselor. Our CARES program is again meeting once per thirty weeks. We have Miss Mary that comes and does fabulous lessons with our kids, and everyone's really enjoying it. It goes very nicely, cohesively in our current PDIS program that we're continuing. Pause is part of that, positive actions in a winning spirit. And our character education program is continued on. We're continuing with the second staff in our social emotional curriculum that's pre-k all the way through second. We are continuing with restorative circles. Our hug program, hello, update, goodbye, check-ins, where we have kids who need a little extra something, something, and they check in with a person that's kind of a caregiver and making sure that they're staying on track, so that's been very successful. We do have a Bosse behavior specialist that comes throughout the year and works with our teachers as needed. And we're continuing with our Western New York United program, Too Good for Violence program. So kids do receive a ten-week, once a week scenario, learning about that. So we're continuing on with all of those things. And so this is the weighted with the other sex conduct, and we are well within our range for that, so.
The intermediate schools had eight incidences, we had seven. There was on school grounds, one that was on the bus. Here's our weightings, because we had three of them, there were other sex conduct. We had the bullying, harassment, it was non-cyberbullying, we had a false alarm, and we had eleven. But we're at point two eight, so it is below the one point five benchmark. Supports that we have in place are things that we've been doing, but each year we try to strengthen that or add other things, and that's what we're doing. So we're continuing with our PDIS system, and we're currently in the process of revamping our MTSS system with our child support team. We're sort of rebranding it, it's going to be instead of child support, it's going to be student support. And we're coming up with more frequent meetings, more data collection to look at students that are having difficulty either with behavior or academics. We are still doing our shout-outs, we have individual counseling, we have group counseling that we do. It's part of PDIS, we have check-in, check-out, which students that we feel need another layer of support get a mentor. And they check in with that mentor in the morning, and they check in at the end of the day. But they have goals that they are trying to reach throughout the day, and that's what they discuss with their mentor. We have our social worker who's continuing to work with our students, and a full-time counselor that was hired. This year, I put in yellow sort of the new things that we're looking at doing, but whatever is in white is what we've been doing and are going to continue. So we have a dean of students this year, which is, I think is going to make a huge impact on being able to connect with even more students on a daily basis. We are creating a restorative justice team, and we're working with a restorative justice coalition this year, so we're getting trained. And we're going to start doing more restorative circles when students re-enter the classroom. So not just suspensions, it could be in-school suspensions, but it could be lunch detentions or two short removals from class. We're getting our staff trained on what that restorative process looks like to re-enter the child again. Big brothers, big sisters, we work with the Western New York United program also, Too Good for Violence. We have our school counselor who pushes in the second step, our school psychologist does that, our school counselor pushes in with SEL lessons. And we embedded over the summer, we did some curriculum work where we took our ELA maps, and we've embedded some diversity, equity, and inclusivity into those maps. So that we're teaching those principles and foundations, not just extensible lessons, but they're being integrated into our curriculum as well. And then our morning meetings, which we've always done, but now what we added this year into the master schedule is a community checkout. So teachers are checking out with students at the end of the day as well. It's only five minutes because that's all we had, but it's better than not being able to check in with your students, and then things fester overnight, and then you don't know what happened. So now it's a quick check-in at the end of the day so they can get a pulse on where kids are, and if they need to make a phone call home, or if they need to reach out to one of the counselors to say, hey, could you talk to the student first thing tomorrow morning? We're able to address it quicker, the needs of our students quicker. We have the backpack program through the Western New York Food Bank. Our more program that the district has, we have student ambassadors at every grade to help new students transition into the building and their classrooms so they greet the new students that are registering in. And our school improvement goals are based on diversity, equity, and inclusivity framework. That's what our building goals are to be set.
So as you go up to grade levels, you get more incidents. Thirteen incidents, you can see nine offenders, so some of these incidents do involve multiple students. There were seven incidents that were discriminatory in nature, and that comes down to our, the bullying and harassment issues that we have had this year. As you can see, most of the points that we have coming from are from two sexual offenses. Just so you know, something like pantsing is considered a sexual offense. Okay, so there are two different categories in sexual offenses. One, the major offenses are typically more violent, where the other sexual offenses would be more of your, what I would consider more of a sexual harassment type of level. You'll see a lot of the same programs that the primary and intermediate school have talked about, you know, we carry on in the middle school. Some of it is just because they're more of a district-wide type program or a K-eight program. Some of it, quite honestly, as we saw the school improvement process that Mrs. Crum went through in the intermediate school, and how successful some of those programs were, we stole them. The leaders in training is part of Western New York United, so they do come into our sixth-grade class and also do a ten-week unit. But then as those sixth graders move into seventh and eighth grade, there's cohorts of roughly a dozen students that become these leaders in training. They do a full summer program with Western New York United, and they come back and bring those skills into our building. They run our whole red ribbon assembly that we do in October as well. Project Care is relatively new to us, this is our second year going into it. And they really try to teach students about reading emotions and expressing emotions. It also hits on a lot of our ELA standards as well. And they push into one academic class on a three-level a week. So we kind of spread that around, so no class loses more than four days a year of instruction, but yet the kids are getting this service at least once a week throughout the entire year. We are continuing with PDIS, we work with face-to-face, again, bigger kids sometimes have bigger problems. So as we find students who maybe have some kind of dependency issue, we do refer them to face-to-face and have that partnership. Our social workers have been absolutely phenomenal in building relationships with compere and mental health associates. They have interns coming in who actually run small groups and one-to-one counseling with a lot of our students. So it just adds as another resource and another, or outlet for our students to share with. We also were able to get, thank you to all of you for allowing us to have a dean of students and a hall monitor this year. Cheryl List is our hall monitor, she's doing twenty-three thousand steps a day. So she, she's definitely out and about, and we are definitely noticing less students in the bathrooms, even during passing time, less students being late to school and late to class already, this is in the first two or three weeks, we have noticed a significant difference. And our dean of students, Dale Stryker, has really taken a proactive approach. So he's not really looking so much at discipline, you know, after it already happened. He's looking at those students who are at risk and running small groups with them during, during lunch. And he actually developed with Kelly Cook Fair, a five-week program that students enter into as they're struggling. And he's working on skill-building and ways to deal with their complex emotions and their outbursts in a more constructive manner so that hopefully it doesn't lead to disciplinary referrals, and we don't get even run, get to that level where Mrs. Phillips or I would have to get involved. And then our school counselors are running groups as needed, so it kind of depends on what we have going on. There's some years where we just have a lot of changing families. Fortunately, that happens way too often, so that is usually one of our groups. Sometimes we'll have a group of students that are struggling with anger management, and they'll go under that, run a group for that. So those, those groups have really helped because it allows students to realize that they're not alone in their struggles every day.
High school also had thirteen incidents as well. We had one weapons possession, it's listed as an other because we found that there wasn't through a normal scanning device that they were coming through, so you get in for more of that. We did have seven incidents of bullying, one incident of cyberbullying, and we did have one bomb threat. And as you see, the bottom of those stats score, we did have three situations of drugs possession, mostly THC may pads, which was. That brings us well below the average, and I'm not going to go through all this, but I think, you know, the high school is a very robust program for the students. If you are, want to get involved, you have an opportunity to get involved, try and get students more and more involved, obviously key. We are up in our athletic program as far as students participating, which is great. We are up on yearbooks, which had usually three or four people, twenty-two students showed up the other day for a yearbook to try to be involved in it. All excellent, very good things. You know, we do have our second year of our freshman mentor program, which is the type is to basically have our upper classmen mentor freshmen, even when we freshmen, and basically I'd say, show them the way, show them the way, show them the way, you know. You know, I always say that our school is only as good as our students, to be honest with you. And our students, you know, leaders and our upper classmen have to show the freshmen how, how they conduct ourselves. And so far, this group of mentors this year have really stepped up, I think they've been great. They're more vocal with me about their, their struggles and trying to connect with the freshmen, and something like that, which is great. And so I'm thinking of through, trying to, you know, to connect. Our school resource officer is an excellent resource. Our social worker, Mrs. Cook Fair, you know, does, you know, miracles, our counselors, our assistant principal, Mr. Klimzak, all of our teachers. They work pretty hard, you know, and we, and we, and we try to build relationships with our students in a rational way. That is conducive learning and opportunity for all of our students. Music trip, I believe we had.
Hi, everyone, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Anna Zlikowski, I'm a recorded speech track high school. And I'm here tonight to present our proposal for a music trip for our high school students. Our music program has grown a lot, and it's been really awesome to see, and so we're wanting to provide this, I guess, for enrichment opportunity for our students. So we are planning on going to Cleveland and Pittsburgh on this little tour that we have. So we would leave on the morning of Thursday, January eleventh, and we would be in Cleveland on Friday, January twelfth. And then we would be in Pittsburgh on Saturday, January thirteenth. So the cost of each student is around four hundred and ninety-nine dollars with a cap of fifty-one students and four chaproms. If we get enough student interest, we will increase that cap to invest in the second bus. Students will ride on a coach charter bus, and the purpose of the trip is to further our students' musical knowledge and experiences with a variety of activities that they would not otherwise be able to have in Western New York. So on Thursday, we're planning on departing for Cleveland at around 8:00 AM, I think you were thinking. Meals rest stops will be coordinated between chaproms and the bus charter. Right when we get there, we're going to go to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, which is a really, really cool museum that has a lot of interesting exhibits, not only related to rock music, but pop, all that good stuff. After that, we will go to the hotel to check in. We would go to downtown Cleveland for dinner. And then we're going to see a performance of Mrs. Doubtfire, which is a musical now, which is really fun. It's actually coming to Shaysland this weekend if you want to see it. On Friday, we have breakfast at the hotel. And then we kind of do a non-musical activity, which is just the Cleveland Aquarium because it's a really awesome facility. After that, we would have lunch. And then we would depart for our next stop in Pittsburgh. And the reason we're going to Pittsburgh is because this is a combined chorus orchestra trip. So the Mrs. Doubtfire production is kind of aimed more for chorus students. And then the orchestra in Pittsburgh is playing Pictures of an Exhibition, which is a super, super awesome symphony. And none of the orchestras in the Cleveland area were playing anything of interest at this time. So we're just going to make a quick pit stop in Pittsburgh for that. And then on Saturday, we would have breakfast at the hotel. And then we would check out and depart for a tour of Carnegie Mellon University, which has an incredible school of music, it's very historic, lots of famous musicians attended this school. And this gives kids a chance to see what universities have to offer outside of Western New York, even if they're not going for music or musical theater. And then we would arrive back later in Saturday afternoon. So just the highlights, we'd be going to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. We would be going to the House of Blues Restaurant for dinner. After that, we would go to see Mrs. Doubtfire at the Playhouse Square, which is Cleveland's version of Shays pretty much. Then on Saturday, like I said, Pittsburgh Symphony Orchestra, which is an incredible, incredible orchestra. And then we visit Carnegie Mellon. That's our plan, our backup, if we don't visit Carnegie Mellon, is to visit Prudential on the way back, which, you know, I have a ton of kids applying to Prudential this year for music specifically. So that would enrich them, as well as students who are looking to go there because I know that is a very accessible school that many kids choose to pursue after high school. And then our one non-music activity would be the Greater Cleveland Aquarium. I'm excited. Any questions?
No, during the January, I have to say that Cleveland's going to make the playoffs, but have you like taken kind of like maybe like the prices of the whole world could go up?
So, um, it's kind of tricky because normally around, uh, music trips happen in the springtime. Springtime for the music department is a very busy season because we have the musical in March, we have all the all counties in March, which we have increased student attendance in, which is like awesome. But that kind of prevents us from going to a trip during that time. And then Adam Smith is planning his high school trip during April, so we didn't want to interfere with that. And this is our first year doing a trip because the last time they planned for an out-of-state trip was before COVID. I wasn't here. But this is something that we want to kind of implement regularly into the music program because, you know, kids really create those core memories. I mean, these trips are one of my favorite memories from high school. So January is just how it worked out this year. But in the future, we think we want to aim for more like April time, if we can coordinate that with Adam Smith.
And I would just say they are using travel logs and great, and so far it has been greatly great. He pivots pretty quickly. While we were in COVID, he had lots of different scenarios, and this couldn't happen, that couldn't happen. He even pivots like a week or two beforehand. So I feel like if they did it on their own, I'd be like, yeah, I'm nervous, but we travel logs it pretty much. We've been doing it with experts and they've been great so far. So I think we do, I think, yeah, we're talking about the Browns.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the field? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is a letter though that was provided by Mr. Aramey that replaced settings tonight.
Joe, I need a vocal introduction, so I am the director for your introduction meeting group here. So before I go into what we talked about, I hope everybody has seen the progress that we're doing at high school and, you know, we finally took down that south wall and you can see that gym is basically gone. Wednesday, we're taking out those beams, there's 30,000 pound beams that are going to be craned off and shipped away. So it's been a great progress over the last four months and just kind of excited to continue this on. So what I'm actually here for is thinking forward to the next phase of construction. So in this building, there is major electrical equipment that needs to be replaced as part of the previous capital project. We did two of the substations, two smaller substations, of course, was pre-COVID. So we are now dealing with the actual COVID effect of a long time for electrical equipment specifically. It's touched our industry for about the last 12 to 18 months. And we're seeing the times anywhere from 50 to 136 weeks for parts of these. So as you guys know, the process of procuring materials and going out for a project and bidding and awarding and then ordering those materials, if we're in a position where we're waiting that long, this project is never ending with that mindset. So we've taken a couple proactive steps as a team. We've separated the SED numbers so that when we do the work in this building for Phase Two, we are able to close out the majority of the project in the event that that material doesn't show up in time. However, that could be 25, 26 if we're working under normal circumstances. So what we've presented to Mr. Biangelo and Dr. London here are a couple options. So normal procurement procedures for this year, we wait for SED approval, right? So SED approval is about six months away. We then have to go out to bid. We then have to take submittals from the contractor once we award contracts and then we have to order the material. So we're looking at probably nine months from today in order to order that material. With the lead times, of course, that puts us way out and that puts us in, you know, 25 if there's a job. Option two is something that we utilized recently. We actually utilized it for the turf field when we did the expansion of the softball and baseball diamonds. If we do the outfield, is co-op purchasing. So that Sourcewell, Keystone, Omni, those are the groups. You guys are affiliated with them already for, you know, different purchasing that you do. That allows us to bypass the bidding process and go direct to the source because it's our vendor bid and they're on the bidder's list basically. We can go that route as well after SED approval, right? But that still puts us into February, March, which still doesn't allow us to hit 24 target summer work. Mind you, this has to happen in summer because we're doing the building shutdown, it's a couple weeks worth of work. So another option that we have presented, which we think is probably the best case scenario to allow the district to actually procure this material, is to work with one of the co-op groups prior to us actually getting SED approval. So the design is complete and it will be submitted to the state in the next couple of weeks from younger right as the architect. And so we have worked with two of the groups already to kind of understand what the lead time is of this material. They tell us it's between 30 and 39 weeks right now, however, I've seen that slip. But I believe if we go in the direction, which is really not normal to go in this direction before getting SED approval, it allows us the best chance to get this material for next summer and then effectively close this project up as a original project. So very impressive at times, it's touching everybody, including the utility companies. They can't give a hand for instances. And it's, you know, just something that we want to plan for. So just trying to do some forward thinking here and, you know, figuring out what the best options are, you know, for the district and obviously this construction project for Phase Two.
Joe, do you worry that the SED process could change this product? Or will the item, at the time of bid, just the way this particular item is, would it be exactly what it is today?
Yes, yeah, there will be no questions in regard to the product that needs to be installed. It's a matter of, the system that's currently in place, it doesn't have any fail safes so that ultimately, when you shut one off, they all shut off because they pass through each other. What the new design is doing is allowing isolation between the different substations. So each one would have its own disconnect, so then there would be certain parts of the building that could be shut off. Very similar to the normal electric panel, which is on a much larger scale, is kind of what we're dealing with here. So, no, no, so the design is complete, I mean, it's done, their design, you know, code compliant. Ultimately, that's their responsibility as a designer to make sure things are code compliant with the New York State. But no, I don't foresee any of those items.
Would us getting this through the co-op ahead of the approval risk anything with funding or?
I suppose that could be a possibility. And part of the reason we wanted to discuss it here tonight with you guys, just because it is so unique. Our conversation though has been in regards to lead time being what it is. If it was pre-ordered with arrangements through that particular vendor, they would know, you know, payment for this receipt of this won't occur until after SED's approval. So that, that would minimize the chance and maybe if not just outright rule out the chance that there would be any issues. Because as long as it's received and then paid for after SED has said yes, that's acceptable, you wouldn't have any issues. What is the, what's the estimated dollar value, Joe, on this particular item? Who are less than $500,000?
Oh, yeah.
Too much. Yeah, yeah, because we have incidentally other pieces, so.
Correct.
Yeah, it's around the $200,000.
So the co-op will let us order this with no penalty?
Yeah, so I'm currently, yeah, so I'm currently working with, through the Omni Group, which actually Graybar is the rep for it. And they're working with the ZA agency who's the basis of designing material on the project. They actually assisted with the design. So I've had preliminary conversations with them to try to explain the situation the district is in, of course. And they were going to reach out, of course, to their, to their folks to try to understand it. They understand our dilemma and they want to help if, of course, they can go, you know, through with that. I think probably knowing, knowing how it works, you're not going to pay for the material until the material arrives, right? So I mean, that's our ships, basically. Understanding that we're 40 weeks away from actually shipping, there's probably no risk there. There may be some commitments needed on behalf of the district for submittals and just getting them to agree like to do it. So it may look like some sort of down payment potentially, just for them to get the ball rolling and have that monetary commitment to the actual job. But it's, it's nothing in line with, you know, the 200 total, you know, I don't think it's anywhere there. I haven't gone that far down the route yet. And I'm also, just so everyone knows, I'm also dealing with Stark, who is another vendor, who lives in this co-op world, who actually does a lot of the HVAC equipment. They also supply electrical equipment as a double check, of course, of parts and pieces. So, you know, providing the district, you know, the best price, of course. Because the co-op, although it is pre-bid, basically, and around the list of pre-bid items, you know, we still want to make sure that we're across our teeth and eyes and give the best value to the district, so.
We checked any applicable state regulations, purchasing requirements, to ensure that this fits in with that. Without, I would think, just on the mountain of the district too, I think.
Yeah, so I personally, I mean, I personally was here with ATUR for turf. I've done it with Trunk Gold for roofing systems. These systems are in place for the district to be able, you know, to bypass the normal bidding. And again, so this is strictly for material. We would still go through normal operations and bid out the actual electrical labor and the work through the contractors. So the electrical contractor would still actually be responsible for not buying this turnkey. This is strictly just to procure those materials and give us an opportunity of a fighting chance to actually get this on.
But we're not bypassing bidding, we're, it's called a co-op.
Correct, yeah, it's designed to do this, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, so we're well within our rights for, you know, legal.
And we know that SED will approve it?
Yes, I mean, this is a package, that's part of the project. So I'll continue to do my homework on my end and provide some updates from both groups. And then we'll talk about the steps.
Formal action, just kind of confirming we're in agreement with that. I would recommend that the board accept the proposal to move forward with the procurement of this electrical gear for Phase Two.
Do we have a, do I have a motion? Chris Second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil Goode.
Thanks for your technology. Consent agenda, I would recommend that the board approve the Financial Non-Personal Consent Agenda items one through four as submitted.
Do we have a motion?
A motion.
All in favor?
I would recommend that the board approve the Personnel Consent Agenda items one through twenty as submitted.
Do I have a motion? All in favor?
These personnel items, Craig Smith, I'm not sure who's here, this new hire, Shane Rendy. Mary Puck Maston? Welcome.
Thank you.
Let's see, Marie Quaid, yes, welcome. Sabrina Vasquez-Laros. No argument, I didn't say that correctly. All right, thank you.
At this point, just real quickly, for our new hires, first and foremost, welcome to Maryvale. Thank you, we look forward to seeing great thanks from you. My name is James McDerbit, I'm the current sitting board president. I've been on the board about five and a half years now.
I'm Jennifer Polarski, I'm the current vice president of the school board. And I've been on the school board for three years, so welcome, thank you.
Marie Zimmer, this is my first year. I am a retired Maryvale teacher and these two ladies, I've given their children, they are an awesome addition to the Maryvale family. Thank you for being here.
My name's Chris Few, I've been on the board for a year and a half and, you know, welcome.
I'd recommend the board approve the memorandum of agreement as presented.
Do I have a motion? Second. All in favor?
I'd recommend the board approve the distribution surplus books as presented.
Do we have a motion? All in favor?
I'd recommend the board approve the summer 2023 kitchen equipment bid.
And the motion? All in favor?
I'd recommend the board approve the second reading of the policy updates.
Do we have a motion? All in favor?
ECASB, Erie County Association, we had our delegate assembly meeting this past week, Chris and I were there. It was a good meeting, they had a lot of good conversations amongst the different districts. Legislative is Thursday.
It is Thursday.
Are you going to be able to attend?
Yeah, I originally didn't think I was going to be able to, but I am going to attend.
Okay, perfect. And then we have budget and finance the week after, which I am not able to attend. Marie, I think you're the alternate, would you like to go?
And then what date is that?
It's Thursday, October, September 28.
September 28th, it's Thursday, yeah, so I can attend it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. We actually do have our executive director sitting in the audience, Dave. Dave, do you have anything to add or say? Dave, do you have anything to add or say?
Other than we have a couple programs coming up. We have District Clerk workshop on October 5th. That information went out, we have a limited number of spots available, so if you're interested, I'll tell you the thing.
So, right.
And the next program that we have is October 12th with Rick Timms, and that is filling up fast also, and it's a great program. In fact, I'm going to see him at Chautauqua County on Wednesday. Similar program, just different facts and figures, because there are different districts out there.
That'll be at the columns, if anyone's interested. Let Sheena know, she can get you registered for that. And then, of course, we still have to discuss school board at the annual meeting in October. If anybody's interested, we got to get registered, I think, early, bird is coming soon. I'm not going to be able to get the time off of work to go to the three days, so. But if somebody can, let us know. I don't know of any updates with New York State School Board, so, outside of the convention coming up. I am all set.
Kevin Rick left, so.
He'll be saving up for next meeting.
Yeah.
No, but before we do adjourn, it dawned on me that for the audit report, we did not take action to officially receive and accept the audit report that was presented. It just wasn't listed separately in that way. Of course, if we could recommend the board officially accept the audit report that was presented.
Do we have a motion?
No motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, I need a motion to close the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.